March 4th town meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have cell phones with you tonight, please put them on airplane mode or turn them off or vibrate, please. Upcoming meeting minutes, meetings, the next town meeting will be Monday, April 1st at 7:30 PM here at the town office. Our second meeting, which will be budgetary meeting, will be April the 15th at 7:30 here at the town office. Is there any other meetings or any other things anybody else has before then?
Yes, sir.
Matty, don't we have a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, April 5th?
Do you have one?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. Everybody check your meeting minutes? Is there any meeting minutes for February 4th? If anybody needs to sign up for the town, if they want to speak, please sign up over there, please, at the door, if you want to speak. Is there any corrections or amendments to the meeting minutes as presented?
No, sir.
I didn't have any.
You didn't have any meeting minutes?
I didn't have any corrections.
Okay. I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the February 4th town meeting notes as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell, all favor of the meeting minutes being passed, please say aye.
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 Aye. Passes 5-0. Please report. Deputy?
Evening.
Evening.
I'm here to fill in for Ben tonight, hopefully I won't embarrass him or myself here. I'm gonna start on the second page and then we'll circle around to one of the biggest things to go on this month. But, went through some of the stuff here, some of the major things or the things, we had several of. We had four suspicious activity calls. As I understand it, nothing came out of those, those were just people calling in, somebody walking where they shouldn't be or where they thought they shouldn't be, things like that. We had five destructions of property. In speaking to Ben this afternoon, most of this stuff was random minor acts of, you know, just juvenile vandalism. It's not a crime wave in the making, as I understand it. We had five 911s, eight alarms, none of those were good alarms, those were all false alarms. The deputies conducted eight talks cards, five walking patrols, 40 patrol checks. They conducted 25 traffic stops and out of those stops, they wrote nine citations and had 17 warnings. And one traffic arrest from one of those stops on a suspended driver, as I understand that. And that's basically, basically the bulk. But, the biggest event to occur for this last month was Deputy Mossdoler was temporarily transferred to the schools to fill in. There was a vacancy from a deputy at Lengano High School who had to have shoulder surgery. And because of the training involved in that mandated by the state, they have to have a deputy who's had that training and it's four to six weeks long. So, rather than do that, they approached Ted and asked him if he'd be willing to fill in and he agreed to do that. So, at the same time, luckily, we were conducting a process to permanently replace a Middletown deputy who got transferred to Investigations. So, out of that transfer process, we selected a couple of alternates to help fill in the temporary vacancy for Ted. So, about eight weeks of that or more will be filled by Jason Ahal. Deputy Ahal and I worked together for a couple of years, I was really pleased, I fought really hard to get him, to get him up here. I think he'll be a good fit for the town during his time here. I know that he, he's a hard worker and if you ask him to do something, he'll bend over backwards, he'll kill himself trying to get it done. And he's a straight shooter, so I don't think you'll have any issues with him at all. But, I expect Ted, right now, I expect Ted will be back in the middle of June, as far as I know, so. That's pretty much all I have, you guys have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
He's been transitioned to the problematic areas?
I'm sorry?
He's been transitioned to the, know where the problematic areas are?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ben was here in town with me all day long and I'm gonna be in town probably most of my day, every day for the next couple of weeks until Jason gets fully up to steam and up to speed. He's been reading a lot of the back reports and things like that, some of the bigger investigations that Ben's been working on from some thefts from cars here in town, so he's pretty up to speed on everything that's major going on. But, it'll be a process.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, thank you, and welcome to Emmitsburg.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Town managers' report?
Good evening, first off, Commissioner Buckman, there's a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, April 16th. That'll be noted on the next agenda for April, but 7:30 here. All right, this is the town manager's report for January of 2019, I'll highlight some of the key areas related to the streets. Staff plowed, salted and shoveled for a couple of snow events, repaired and replaced some streetlights, installed ash receptacles at the town square that we received through a grant, repaired a manhole in Brookfield and conducted the monthly street sweeping. In the parks, staff assisted the Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts picked up and bagged piles of leaves in Memorial and Community Park. We thanked them for that, it was very helpful. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently at its spillway level of 16.6 feet. The well levels, well number three, number four and number five were shut off to allow, allow less gallons per minute through the plant and the lake quota is being met or exceeded. Water production and consumption, the backwash rate, backwash water rate was about 11.8% and 79.3% of the water in the month of January came from Rainbow Lake and we purchased 462,450 gallons from the mound in January. Related to wastewater, we received approximately 4.3 inches of precipitation. We currently have a surplus of 22.4 inches over the last six months. We treated an average of 778,000 gallons per day and consumed 198,340 gallons per day, which means 74.5% of the water, of the wastewater treated at the wastewater treatment plant this month was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of January, however, we did exceed the plant's design capacity seven times in the month of January. On the following page, you'll see trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of April. And I've highlighted some of the meetings that I attended. And then, some of the noteworthy items, staff upgraded some outdated water meters. They repaired a water leak on West Main Street. They assisted the contractor with beginning stages of sewer relining project and in February, they assisted the contractor with the relining and that project is now complete. However, the sewer line from Harrington's, Harrington's parking lot to the end of the line towards the bridge cannot be relined until the town installs a manhole because there's nowhere for the liner to go, there's no way to pull it through. But, the majority of that line has been completed. The liner on Lagoon Number 3 at the wastewater treatment plant has been, was repaired, there was a small tear in it. The water plant, the entire plant is operating with just lake water and wells number one and number two come on occasionally with reduced runs. In the month of January, we had a visit from MDE, they conducted a water plant inspection and came up the following three things that the town is mandated to complete. The first one, which is on the agenda tonight, is to implement a black flow or a cross connection program ordinance. The roof on well number five needs to be repaired and we need to complete a preventative maintenance schedule, which we had mostly completed, they just wanted a few things added to it. And that is the manager's report for the month of January.
Do you have any questions for town manager? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Following up on the pipe lining issue related to the manhole, the sewer access, do we have a timeline set, a date set where we're going to create that or are we even close to that for engineering purposes?
No, there's a lot of, that's gonna go into work so that the, the cost associated with installing a manhole is, is, it's not cheap. So, we're gonna concentrate on getting the other lines working on that, you'll see that in the upcoming FY 2020 budget of relining some more and then, once we get a chance, we'll sit down with an engineer and a design and come up with a plan to install a manhole.
So, the section that was scheduled to have the lining, that can't be lined?
It was all, it's all been completed, except for the small portion from about Harrington's parking lot towards the bridge. It's a very small section that wasn't done, the rest of the project was completed with no problems.
Great, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Can you give us an update on the bridge, I mean, I know weather obviously has been wrecking basically with our work, but where are they as far as right now?
I believe, as everybody's noticed, I left my note back in my desk on the bridge project. The lane shift has been completed, they're currently working on, they were shut down for a day for some sediment and erosion control issues, but they complete, fixed those and they're back up and working. I know they're working on the other side, do you have an update, Zach?
They're gonna restart tomorrow.
They're restarting tomorrow, okay.
Cool, that works, I just, sure, thanks.
It looked like most of the bridge is gone, the old bridge is gone already.
I believe so.
Just a little bit of the bottom has to be taken out and then they can start replacing with the new. I do have only one more question, a couple of, I had a couple complaints from, there's been some vehicles on the, on the the square, have been parked there for a number of weeks and not moved and I don't know if, if the parking person can check one out and maybe talk to tires and keep an eye on them because it was one car and then they changed and moved it to another one.
Apparently, the plant, the code enforcement's addressed it, but we'll follow up on it. And then, just one more to your Commissioner Blanchard about the bridge, I think they've estimated their completion date has been moved up to hopefully August of 2019 as opposed to December. But, we'll, we'll follow up on that parking complaint.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioner comments, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, thank you. Something was brought to my attention, a request that I'm gonna bring forward as an agenda item, hopefully, for a future meeting related to wood collection from the town's watershed. A number of folks in town rely on wood heating for their homes, a number of folks also are in an income bind. So, they're looking to be able to draw from the watershed, from deadfall and they're hoping to create sort of a structured process through which they could legally and appropriately remove wood with town supervision, they've brought up some models from other communities and that's something I'm gonna bring forward. I think there's great value to that, especially given the fact that if, if folks are financially strapped or hard pressed at least, this would be something useful to them as they're heating their homes using wood. And that's a year-round heating, it's not just winter heating. Moving from there, I had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent of the Maryland Park Service. One of the things she shared is she is proposing or will be proposing a means by which small communities such as ours can have grant management assistance. So, maybe that was another way through which we can manage our recreational trail program grants as, as a way to move forward on the $40,000 that we have in grant money available to us right now. I was advised that the Trolley Trail folks are gonna be presenting something at the Thurmont Town Meeting, I think that's tomorrow night. The Trolley Trail affects us because hopefully if that gains momentum, we can gain some more momentum linking to the university. I think there's great value to that and a footpath would be a great benefit to all of us, maybe even connecting to Thurmont. I think that would be a big, big tourist draw here. I was approached by some residents related to the intersection of Irishtown Road and Brookfield Road, not about the signs being knocked around, but rather by the puddling that's occurring there that's freezing now. And cars are pulling into the intersection at reasonable speeds and sliding onto Irishtown Road and through the stop sign because of the puddling there. The hope is the town can review that and maybe do some trenching of some sort to let water runoff occur there. My thought is maybe a French drain, like a straight bore and some gravel perhaps, just to get the water off the roadway there. I attended the Livable Frederick Planning Meeting that occurred last week at Catoctin High School. We had a good representation from our community, there was some significant discussion related to senior housing in the community, there's a need for that. One of the planning initiatives that they're considering relates to affordable housing. Now, affordable housing in this context is for middle-income individuals and the premise is there is too low an option or too, rather, too few options for individuals to purchase affordable housing. We're not talking about big houses, we're not talking about houses that have subsidies supporting them, we're talking about individuals buying properties but not having the appropriate choice to buy a house that's not exceedingly expensive or excessively large. The other part is I've had more than a few questions coming forward about commercial development on this side of 15. One came forward related to, we'll call them a donut purveyor. So, I'm directing these folks to contact the town office as I don't know if we have any official inquiries yet. And I had more than a few inquiries related to the commercial development across the street regarding rudders and some people are, I would say, supportive of the idea of getting the buildings to look appropriate to the vernacular of, of the town of Emmitsburg. Basically, we want them to look good, we don't want them to look plastic, so I've had some support on that and I'm happy to hear that. These conclude my comments, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz?
Mr. President, should we continue with Commissioner comments or should we jump back to?
Yeah, no, I was gonna finish with it, then I'll go back to planning.
Okay, I didn't wanna...
I skipped it, I did, just jumped over real quick.
No problem.
But, I'll go back to it.
Briefly, just, we had a productive Parks and Rec meeting the other week and just the minutes are in process. Ms. Shaw, I will have this to you shortly, I promise. And anyone that's interested in joining Parks and Rec, please, please see me. We're always looking for, for new members. Or even if you are interested and just wanna sit in, just to see what it's like. Next meeting is 3rd Tuesday in May, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buckman?
I also, when is bulk trash pickup, I wanna kinda get that, I think it's in April, isn't it?
It's April 20th, hold on.
Just so people know.
April, is it April 27th? April 6th, I was way off.
April 6th?
April 6th, oh, it's on the calendar.
And then, the other thing, the Citizens Advisory Committee is having somebody come to present the Alice Report to us, which is on the 16th, right, of April and please consider coming, getting to know our community, where we live and what's going on there. Everyone's invited, that's an open meeting.
Commissioner, you might suggest you explain what the Alice Report is?
Alice Report is a report that's presented that working or families that are not making enough money to, to live, pretty much, and that we're, I think, at a six, what was it, 68% in North Frederick County? Yeah, it's pretty high, so we wanna gather a better understanding of exactly what's going on so as we go forward, you know, we know our constituents. Okay, so, that's our town, so please come, we'd like to have you there.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanchard?
Just a couple of things, mainly, obviously, we're in the middle of winter, seems like every other day it's either snow or ice, everything else. Try to be careful out there, encourage you basically to look at your neighbors if they need to help. Random act of kindness can go a long way. One example was I was at work the other day and we got out of school early and I saw a person hovering around my vehicle cleaning my windows off and at first off, my first thought was like the person's trying to break into my car, to be honest with you. And then I got closer and I recognized it was a fellow teacher and I asked her, "What are you doing?" And she goes, "Random act of kindness." And it's amazing how something like that can go a long way, like just making your day. So, anyways, I just encourage you, sometimes a random act of kindness with your neighbors, clear off the sidewalk before they even come outside, goes a long way, so, there you go.
Thank you. I just have one or two, I do like to thank the town staff for all the, the street cleaning and stuff that we've been doing for the snow and ice removal, I know we have a couple back-to-back there, they've been doing a very good job with, with salting and keeping the streets clean. Also, I wanna thank the entire Emmitsburg community for help participating in the Valentine's Day dance that we have for the Community Heritage Day, it was sold out and we raised about $4,800 for the upcoming Community Day and I appreciate everybody, everybody's help because it took a lot of people to help put it on, so thank you for that. I'm finished, I'm done with that. I just kept the planning commission report from the planning commissioner, can you please give it to us, please, Zach?
Sure, this is the town planner's report for January 2019, I'm also gonna highlight the key aspects of my report. So, I researched and prepared the amendment tonight for the Cross Connection Control Program. As Kathy said, this is a mandate from the Maryland Department of the Environment. I also processed the fee policy for that and the permit application. For Community Legacy, I processed a reimbursement request for the facade rehabilitation work for 317 West Main Street, 309 East Main Street, 300 East Main Street and 30 West Main Street. Processed nine applications totaling $59,917.75 out of an available $50,000 for the fiscal year 2019 facade grant. I met with the Sustainable Community Board on the 9th in order to review those applications and then we forwarded eight of those applications to the Maryland Historical Trust for review and they're still in the review process. For MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, applied for a $3,000 grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to start a storm drain marking program. We can use this credit towards our MS4 permit. Reviewed and processed bids for the Provincial Parkway Storm Drain Escavation Project. Created a request for proposals for the 2019 required MS4 projects. Started researching potential stream restoration projects in order to meet our MS4 permit requirements. For permits and zoning, processed and approved two change-of-use permits, one fence and two sign permits. Also, an alteration of infrastructure permit and a street cut permit. Under Planning Commission, I prepared the Planning Commission's annual report for 2018. This is a requirement per the Maryland law. Also, I presented this to the Planning Commission on the 28th and they approved that. Miscellaneous, I assisted the town clerk with the pump station grant. I also did some maps for the proposed wayside exhibits. Attended a Frederick County City System Training on the 23rd. I created a packet of local, state and federal tax incentives, loans, grants, et cetera, for those looking to start a new business in Emmitsburg. And I wrote an article for the town newsletter on home-based businesses.
Thank you, Zach, does anybody have any questions for Zach at this time, for sure or no?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritz?
Not at this.
Commissioner Blanchard? I don't have any, thank you.
Mayor's comments?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Again, a great job to our staff for what they did around the clock and on the streets for these little nuisance snow we have every week or it, it has to be dealt with and, you know, sometimes you just don't see them coming. Went to Mount St. Mary's Urgent Care Program for a minute over at Vigilant Hose. They were so kind to cover, for that presentation for the Mount's Urgent Care Center. I went, met with the county executive with all the other mayors, it's kind of a monthly meeting we're re-engaging on and go over a lot of things, one of the things was the SROC, is that what they reserved? Where they go to the schools, what do they call it?
SROs.
SROs.
SROs, there you go, thank you. That's where I first felt we were getting the change here. Let's see, climate change, there's, state is really, had set with me and 70 other people from across the state met in Hagerstown, this has been put off since December because of George Bush's passing away. We're supposed to have the first session there, but it, there are three two-day sessions and there are exams that go along with it and finally, we got one day in before the big snow that was supposed to hit, hit here and push back the other one, so it's terrific, it's a terrific course and we're gonna have all the whole staff and anybody up here that'd like to go, it's phenomenal, what they're, what they're talking about and even if you don't believe in it, you ought to go out and listen to it and, and see what they do because it talks about mitigation and adaptation and cutting back and getting rid of waste, one of the bigger, bigger items. We met with Michael Kay, the planner, the town manager and I, went over, formulated how we're gonna put, move this thing from where we went out and stared at it, we marked the trees and now we gotta get it to market. So, we're working on that with him and we have to get our attorney and all that, of course. Seaton Shrine had a Corporate Partners Program luncheon I attended last week and this ended up last week as a guest speaker for Reading Across America at Mother's Seat in school, it was, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal thing and I wanna thank Commissioner Buckman for attending the Frederick County MML Dinner. It was short notice, thank you very much for, that coverage is important that we, we were there because of, because we have become a banner city. I hope you all have a wonderful St. Patrick's Day and a safe one, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in Lent.
Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Appreciate the good luck wish, I'll need it.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, we're going on to public comment. Before you come up to public comment, I ask you please to come up, give your name, your address and please speak to the council directly, do not speak to the staff. Keep all questions up forward and we'll try to answer them if we can. The first one on the agenda is Ed Hines.
Hi, good evening.
Is Duncan coming up with you?
Sure. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council, pleasure to be back in Emmitsburg, one of my favorite towns and a place that I love riding bikes through. My name is Ed Hines, 601 Magnolia Avenue in Frederick City. I'm also the Executive Director for Student Homelessness Initiative Partnership, or SHIP, of Frederick County. We are currently in care of over 700 children in our school system that are experiencing homelessness sometime during the course of the school year. Each year, we hold a large fundraising event that starts and finishes at Mount St. Mary's University. It's called the Maryland Endurance Challenge, you'll find a little flyer there, it's a copy of a postcard that's actually in production right now. It's scheduled this year for May 18th and this is our third annual. I brought Duncan Glenday, who's our, our event director for the event, third year running, to tell you a little more about the event.
Yeah, thanks very much, I'll keep it as brief as I can.
Can you give your name, please?
Name's Duncan Glenday, 9672 Fleetwood Court, Frederick City. There are three events in one, there's a 12-hour national championship, that's a national championship, so the person who wins this is officially the national champion and that's out of Emmitsburg. There's also a six-hour event and there's a three-hour event and the concept is, for the 12-hour event, how many miles can you ride in 12 hours? And because of the fact that it's a national championship, we're bringing in world-class athletes, people who, who literally are known worldwide. The three-hour is more of a fun ride and we're, we're trying to attract families and kids and things like that. Some of them will, you know, race it and they'll put their hammer down and go as quickly as they possibly can. But, the point is that what we're trying to do is we're trying to create an event that'll have a lot of interest, that will bring interest into, into Emmitsburg, that'll bring people from other states. We've had people from Canada, from California, from Florida, Arizona, et cetera. I think we've, so far, we've attracted people from about 18 or 19 states plus Canada. So, the point is that there's a lot of interest... there's a lot of interest in it. There are a lot of people coming into this event. And the question really is, and I'll leave it to Ed to extend the question, but the question is, we're very interested in finding out how we can liaise with yourselves to see how we can promote the event, what we can do to promote Emmitsburg as a city, because obviously it's out of Emmitsburg, and see how we can expand the event. We've had approximately 20% growth so far from the first to the second, and so far, apparently, to the third year because reservations are going well, and we expect it to continue to expand. So it will become a fairly big event in the future, we hope. And obviously, the primary objective is fundraising for SHIP.
Thank you.
Yeah, and even though we're just soon to start our third annual event in mid-May, we're already planning for our fourth annual event. Tim and I had some conversations about how we might be able to kind of link the event and make it more of a broader weekend over time, maybe showcase the trails up in the watershed and elsewhere. But one of the things that I'd love to have some conversation with, perhaps with city manager and perhaps others, is taking advantage of a tourism grant called, it's a trip grant, that's made available through the Frederick Visitor Center and Frederick Tourism. And we're soon to apply for that grant. And their grant cycle, which starts July 1 of this year and runs through June 30, the dollars, if we should win the grant, which I've done in the past with another cycling event, another fundraising event for SHIP, we should be in good shape to be able to secure some dollars, and it's pretty significant money, actually. So what I'd love to be able to suggest is if we could begin to have a conversation about planning for the fourth annual event in 2020, but also working in a way that we could maybe secure some additional investment dollars from the tourism grant to help both showcase Emmitsburg as well as promote further the event itself. So I guess one thing I might ask is who might be that individual that we could begin to have conversations with within the city to talk about brainstorming and collaborative discussion?
Go ahead.
I would suggest a handful of folks. For town staff, Mr. President, is this okay? Our town manager and Ms. Willetts. I would recommend over your left shoulder, Mr. Wayne Slaughter from the EBPA, which is the Business Association.
Wonderful.
And I would be happy to join in and hopefully not get in the way. In the past two years, I've ridden over there at some point in the day and disrupted everything by saying, "Hi, I'm Tim from the town," and handed out flyers about what we have here. It's a little bit late, but you'll see bikes on top of cars parked in front of the outhouse and Stavros and so on. So there is a dividend there, and my understanding is some folks were staying at the sleep-in also.
They were.
So there's a direct cash impact to our community for this activity. And, you know, you know we have young people in our public school cluster who need the support. So really, the pointy end of the stick is there, and this is great.
And I'm not going to speak for the Mount, but I bet they would really like to get involved in this also, Mount St. Mary's.
They've been very supportive already, but yes, absolutely, even more so. Absolutely.
Can I ask, is this event on a Saturday?
It is, Saturday, May 18.
Is it all day long?
The 12-hour.
Okay. The only thing, because I don't know if this year, I need to ask one question from the man behind you. Mr. Davis, when is, when is the fire company's big event? May 18?
May 18.
Yeah, it's the same day. That's what clashes on the, that's for next year. Maybe if we don't have it on the same day, we can plan for it.
The whole community gets involved in this.
Good, good.
There'll be a big to-do in the town for that same day.
Very good.
It's exciting. I hope, it'd be nice if this was in the end of June when we have our community day.
Right.
Because we have a lot of bike rides. It'd be nice to have it in June, if we could ever have one in June.
Terrific.
I'm glad this is working out, and I'm glad SHIP is getting better organized and growing and helping more children through the Frederick County.
Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Administrative business? Oh, I'm sorry.
Couple of comments.
Well, I want to go down. Bryant Hoffman. This is on flags?
Yes.
Okay. Give your name and...
I'm Bryant Hoffman, and flag we had up by Stavros thing, and we could move it somewhere else because it wasn't nobody's way or nothing. It was by a trip, and we had been playing for from you guys. I don't know what it's to play for, but I just like, it asks us, asked us, business and all that stuff for the flags, and they were open. And pizza sign, what they call thing, we do, it's there. I was, "Oh, Stavros, let's go to Stavros Pizza, get some food." And it was there for advertising, and I was there for, it wasn't hurting nothing. I just don't know why, but we could move it somewhere else.
It's part of the sign?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. You're a bully.
Do, I don't know if you want, anybody else wants to speak on the sign one that's now? Everybody else is for the sign one that's wants to speak on that now or wait till it comes up on the agenda? Go ahead and come on.
Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Town Staff Donald Son, owner of Emmitsburg Tattoo, co-owner on the square. Just quickly, in reference to, we, EBPA meeting, Mr. Slaughter, Susie and I attended this week, past week, which Zach attended and was very helpful in answering questions about the new ordinance, and has agreed to meet with the four districts that will be involved. Currently, we feel, and Zach put those out today, I'm sure everyone was copied on those meetings. Suggestion I'd like to make is, particularly for the residential, I think it's more important, time-wise, I think it would be better served for residents in the evenings, personally. Just a thought. Works for me because I don't know until noon for the zoning district, business district, but I'm not sure how it works for everybody else. So the other thing, again, very pleased with so far the progress, but we still feel like the business community that I have spoken to and is pretty well-represented with me today, still feels like it's maybe an overreaching, more than maybe overreaching, feel like it's way, way big ordinance for a way small town ordinances. Zach went, again, to Zach's credit, he sat and answered the questions Susie and I had for the time. But anyway, we think those meetings should take place before, and all the input, as he was so gracious about receiving, and should be made. The, what I'm asking the commission is that maybe the meetings be made or be had with Zach and the questions be answered for people in town, because it is a very complicated ordinance to read and figure out before this goes forward any further, presentations and that alike. I think it's really important, and Zach seemed to agree at the meeting, that we get everybody involved in the shaping of these ordinances, because it affects all of us. And the big changes that are coming to town with the rudders and such and everything that's coming, we need to be on top of all this as business owners, and that's why the room is a lot fuller tonight, because it's representing the businesses that are concerned about this and the complications. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think that the meetings that are presented here are mainly for businesses during the daytime. I know I can't get to them during the daytime, but hopefully, there'll be meetings made for residents at nighttime.
Yeah, I think that there should be another four sets or whatever for the people, like a 7:30, like the committee.
Well, I think we can do the residents in the evening. I don't see a problem with that. I think for most businesses, probably during the day, would probably be more beneficial. But I don't have a problem, and I'm sure Zach doesn't, moving the residential one to the evening. And these are, this is actually going to go out, if we have space in our water bills, it's going to go out to everybody when your water bill goes out on March 30th, so look for it with all the dates and the information.
And I don't, yeah.
Chair.
I'll wait, absolutely.
I don't think also that we're not planning on speeding through this in a speedy fashion. I think we're going through it through a long, long process, through months of processing. And this all has to go to planning and zoning before it even comes to the council to be voted on. So planning and zoning, we'll be taking a look at this way before the commissioners see it in the final version, if it does make it that far. So if anybody else has that, but, does anybody else want to speak before we get to sign it? Yes, Diane Walbrecker?
Hello, Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. I was going to comment on the sign ordinance, but if we're going to have public meetings about it, I'd rather wait for that. So just a couple quick things. My husband and I almost killed ourselves coming down the steps right in front of the tattoo parlor. There's steps there now. And if you haven't been on the main street with all the nice, beautiful brick paving that we really like, those steps are really hard to see at night. And if you don't know they're there, we both were coming like this, and both of us fell. It was really embarrassing.
The steps, I'm sorry?
The steps are in front of the tattoo parlor.
Between the planter boxes.
Yeah, between the planter boxes.
Oh, I didn't even know they were there.
And I didn't even know they were there, and I'm not like an idiot, but it's really hard to see at night. Very hard to see. So I don't know if there's maybe...
Reflective tape or something?
Yeah, yellow.
Reflective tape or something that wouldn't take away from the beauty of it, but that would give a little bit of light there so that people could see it.
Maybe the same yellow that's used for the on-and-off ramps of the sidewalk, that way they can see it.
I'll talk to Jimmy and see what we can do.
There may even be a little reflective kind of nice soft lighting that you could do or some, just to let people know about that, you know. Anyway. And there are a couple lights out on West Main Street, on the main street. I don't know if there's a regular process, I'm sorry. I don't know if there's a regular process for doing that. I guess I could call the town office.
The lights are out, you mean?
Lights, yeah. Two of the lights are out on Main Street, so I just wanted to point that out. And I was thinking that since the SHIP event is the same day as the spring fling, it's just, it would be great if that could be a symbiotic kind of thing where they can benefit each other. But I don't know. I don't know when it is. I mean, I don't know what the plans are for those, so just thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Anybody else before we get to the sign? Susie?
Are you talking on the sign ordinance now or are you waiting later and then?
We have either one. I'm asking if you want to speak now, if you want to stay for the sign, or just because it is down in the agenda further. You can speak now, public comment, or you can wait until the sign ordinance comes up. Susie?
It's on.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I always forget to move this stairs. You're not talking into the mic. Susie Glass, 239 Norris Eaton Avenue. I just want to reiterate what Don was saying. We did have a very productive meeting, I felt, with Zach. But we, as a business committee, and I know he's done an awesome job of putting his thing together for tonight, we just kind of feel like it's putting the cart before the horse. If we're going to have these meetings and the discussions, and we're going to make a lot of changes, if we make changes, then it's kind of...
Redundant.
Yeah. It, you know, we're busy, busy people, and we have to come and watch something that's probably going to be changed somewhat, that we just thought we'd bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Please, just for discussion.
Right. It's the way it should, I mean, I understand her concern, obviously. There's no decisions being made, but procedurally, you know, for us, we have to let our commissioners know what's going on before we should let everybody else know, so that they are at the forefront of it, and they can answer your questions then, if you have questions after that. So we're going to proceed with our presentation tonight. Just to give everybody a heads up, for those of you that won't be here at the end of the meeting, the next presentation isn't going to occur till June because we are starting our budget process. So the last final presentation will be in June, but we are going to have those meetings that Zach set forth in April for all the individual districts, and we can have additional workshops in May and in June if necessary.
This is all informational this evening?
Correct.
Nothing's being buried on. It's only informational to let you see what maybe the new ordinance will look like.
And the reason that we broke it up into three meetings is because it is long and involved, and it's easier to take in in smaller pieces.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Is it safe, safe to jump in?
Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification regarding the, just the sign process, I think there's a gray area on that for some folks. The process is working at this stage. It's the board right now that's hearing this information, so it's being brought to our attention. Nothing is set in stone. I think that's very clear. We've made that very clear, I hope. The next piece is, we're not voting on anything to make it permanent. The next step in the process is, this would go to the Planning Commission, and they would look at it, and they would give it some review and mull it over, and then with their recommendations, would come back to the board. So it's a multi-step process. The purpose of the meetings that Mr. Golden is putting forward is to allow for further input for folks who typically wouldn't be able to do so here. And one thing I want to ask the president, maybe staff, is if the meetings occur, and if they occur here, I think there would be value to recording them and to rebroadcasting them in a similar fashion we handle these meetings, because I think it gives more people more opportunity. The other part is, will we be able to record it so somebody can go online and just watch it, you know, as a YouTube-type item or a public access item? Do we have that option?
It's going to be done the same where our town meetings are. So somebody will be here to record it. It'll be uploaded to YouTube, and then there'll be a link on our website just like the town meetings are in the Planning Commission meetings.
And for the public piece, again, and again, it's awesome you guys are here. It's an ongoing process. It's a long process. But please continue giving your feedback to us, you know, anyone you want to, or all of us at one time, however you choose to do it. But it's your continuous feedback that helps us kind of winnie things down to the best product in our judgment and in your judgment. So I hope that helps.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just kind of need a little bit of, a little bit of clarity, because if we're going over a proposed, but then the townspeople are contributing to a different or a change, something that's going to be amendable to the community and to the vision of the town, and then you're going to propose it to us again? You're going to show it to us again?
We have to. So what we are doing is we're giving you the sign ordinance with all the information so that you're informed. Then at the end of our presentation, then you, as the board, makes the determination, one, I don't want to make any changes, it dies from here and nothing else happens, or two, you want to send it on to the Planning Commission. You have to have all the information in front of you to decide whether or not you even want to send it to the Planning Commission. And procedurally, we don't put out things that the board hasn't seen yet. That's how staff can get ourselves in trouble if we're out promoting something that the board's not even aware of, hasn't been educated on. And then we've got our tails between the legs because you're getting questions, and you don't know what we're talking about or what you're talking about. So procedurally, this is the way we've always done ordinances. It's the way the code says that we have to do it. We bring it to you. You guys decide if you want to take it to the Planning Commission. All this stuff that we're doing for the businesses and for the public is to help speed the process along in the long run so that they can be a voice in this, and it makes your job easier. If you know that they have all the information they can have, then it makes everybody's life easier. It's a long, drawn-out process. It's a difficult topic.
Commissioner Ritz?
I think the confusing, confusing part about this entire process is because it's a large ordinance, and we are breaking it out over the course of several meetings. So it becomes a little confusing. I'm a little confused myself on another item. Part three was scheduled to be April 1. I might understand that we're dropping that now.
We are going to push that back to June, as you can see, with the budget forthcoming. We have a lot of things, we don't typically put anything else on the agenda except very minor things when we're talking about the budget. So your second meeting in April and your entire meeting in May is devoted to your budget. So staff has a lot of administrative things that we've got to get done before the end of this fiscal year that I need to bring before the board.
Understood.
And if I throw the sign ordinance on here, we'll be here till 1 o'clock in the morning. So we thought it was best to, the mayor and I, we discussed it with Zach, and Commissioner Sweeney, that we push it back till June so it can have everybody's undivided attention.
No, it's...
That's why. And it was a decision that was made today.
Okay, good. I like that. One other question regarding the public comment, Mr. President.
Yes.
I know we have a lot, I see a lot of business owners out here. They might be commenting on the proposed sign ordinance. When we discuss the ordinance this evening, I know it's basically the second third, so to speak. Are the comments, obviously, we'll have questions, but for public comment, are they for that particular section or for the ordinance in general?
We would like to do from the previous meeting and tonight's meeting. Any public comment, any questions about that, if we can kind of gear it towards those. Any public comment, any questions about that, if we can kind of gear it towards those, probably would be beneficial for the process.
Okay. The reason I ask is because if they're thinking of coming up now at public comment to discuss or at the time of the agenda item, what would be best?
Well, that's why I ask them, if they want to speak now. Usually, some like to speak now, don't like to stay for the meeting, and some like to stay for the meeting and speak then.
That's understandable.
So, Glenn, do you have anything you want to... Everybody else finished?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, after talking to members of the board up here, that the sign ordinance is, a lot of things, technology is changing, the different ways to present yourself inside, out, all these things, different lights in, you see them in Las Vegas, is one concern we've had. The other concern is, we have a special area. It's not a, it's a registered area, not a historic district, but it's got some dignity to it. We want to preserve that. And the third thing is, the sign ordinance is kind of an organic thing. It's kind of something that, it lives and breathes. We haven't touched it since 98. Now, I remember there was a candy store on the corner here, I talked to Ms. Glass about, and I got into it with the town as I was the head of the EBPA at that time, that they had sweets on one of the shutter, on one of the slats of the shutter, and the town let them have it, and they had to take it down. And I wrote an article on that in the Dispatch, and I really feel, I'm a businessman, I've been here 23 years, we're working out of our house, but I've had different sites here where I've been encumbered by sign ordinances, and what Don ran into, just in the period of his time he's been here, it's been two different kind of things going on, and we, I don't want that to ever happen again. We want to get something down. And what we did, we went to the Maryland Municipal League, and they have all the towns and cities, municipalities in our state, and also across the country. And they brought in the American Planners Association, which the town is also a member of, and then everybody is saying, "Look at your town ordinance." It only takes one or two signs downtown. We're trying to protect it, that's all we want. And sometimes, there's a lot of words there, but it's squeezing down into eight pages of definitions and this, and it's getting tighter and tighter, and the font they use, and it's not... But the main thing is, we got something to protect here, and I live in it, I live in that area, so, and work in that area every day, so it's real. And that's why I liked and supported when Zach and Kathy came to me and said, "Let's redo this thing, get it," because it's really crazy, and you were the premier case, you've gotten two different calls in the couple of years you've been here, and we don't want that to happen anymore. Now, you can go down to Newmarket, and every sign has to be approved individually by them, so it might be a flip of the coin and we'll go this. I want people, business, to know what they can get and what they can do here, and there's nothing more like you can't put something on your shutters to accommodate something down in the historic. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Ed Steinfield?
Hi, Eddie. Cheers.
Steinfield? Please give your name and...
Ed Steinfield, 6591 Cole Brook Lane, Middletown, Maryland. And I live between Middletown and Jefferson. I'm a principal in the Emmitsburg Antique Mall, if you're wondering why I'm here. The sign thing has been bothering us for a long time. I think I approached it probably 30 years ago. We've got two billboards on 15, one south, one north, which direct people in Emmitsburg. Once they get here, they can't find the mall because we're one block off of East Maine and one block off of South Seaton. And so, the last time I spoke for the planning commission, I think it was, a lot of people commented, "Yeah, we're getting people asking for directions all the time." So what our interests were, which is covered in here, is having off-site directional signs to get to the mall, which would be a tremendous help. The way the regs were before, we couldn't do it, so people would ask. I had a couple of concerns. One is what the zoning was for the off-site signs, that we could still permit off those two streets, and apparently, that's not a concern. And the other concern was the size of the signs we have now, and they wouldn't meet the new criteria, but apparently that's being grandfathered in, so that's gonna be a relief for us too. But, that's what we're looking for, is just some guidance for people that finally make it into town to find out where we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Don't we have a sign on South Seaton, like there's an antique sign?
Yeah, that thing appeared.
Does that work?
I think the county put it up.
That's been here for at least, no, it's tourist council?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, is that who put it up?
I think it was a...
I don't know. All of a sudden, my manager says we got a sign up out there, and I said, "Holy cow, that's fantastic."
It's been here for a little while. That works?
It's been lobbying for a long time.
Does that work? I think I understand it.
Yeah, we made two efforts. We went back a long time ago to get some sort of provision, and the answer from the planning commission is, someday, we're gonna revise the sign ordinance, and that was probably 25 years ago. And then the next effort was when the Town Square Planning, in that group who did a fantastic job, we made sure we provided inputs for off-premises signs coming in to the mall.
Commissioner Buckman?
I like all the great, fun stuff you guys have been doing, bringing in some more people into our town. I know that when I first moved here and I did GPS to find you guys, it didn't lead me to you.
Oh, what a surprise.
GPS led around it, but never chew it, and there's gotta be some way to correct that, because I know that most people feel that our Antique Mall is better than many of them, and they want to come. But again, you're right, they can't find it. Sometimes I drive people there. I see them looking, driving in circles.
Well, one thing we did in the past, we put a giant flagpole up, but every time a thunderstorm came along, it ripped our flag to pieces, and that thing was expensive to replace.
A lot of wind in our院子.
And plus, they thought we were an institution of some sort, so...
We do have a signage, informational signage board on the square. Is the Antique Mall on that?
That's actually getting replaced because it's outdated.
It's outdated, so we could put some information for our informational signing board that's in front of the outhouse for the Antique Mall.
Wherever we can get permission from the landowner to allow us to put it up. So, I haven't talked to anybody yet because up to now, we haven't been able to do it. The final input I got, I think the work that Zach has done is, as thick as it is, is fabulous. And to get something uniform, as the mayor said, would be a tremendous help, rather than trying to get our approval for everything. So appreciate the work, and appreciate allowing the input, as the mayor said, an organic thing, and that's a big help.
Thank you. Phyllis Kelly? Kelly?
Hi, I'm Phyllis Kelly. I live at 22 Centennial Fairfield, Pennsylvania. I am manager of the Emmitsburg Food Bank, and that's why I'm here. I love Emmitsburg. I just was, we've had problems down there this winter. The roof has leaked terrible. We've had mold problems in one area, and I just wanted to, people have told me to come to the council and let you know of what our situation is, and if anybody has ideas to where the Pregnancy Center and us could move. The roof is in terrible condition. We did get it temporarily so that the rain does not come in anymore, but it's only a fix. It needs replaced, and to replace that big building is gonna cost like $40,000. And I don't know whether it's even worth it down there.
Does the food bank own the building?
No. Michael Sullivan owns it, and we rent it. The Pregnancy Center rents it, and we sub-rent from them. And it also, we're both using propane to heat it, and it just, like, a bill is $300 a month in the winter for both of us. So I mean, it's not, we can afford to rent somewhere else if we know where to rent.
Well...
We were looking maybe, and we had an idea where, I don't know, Boyle Store, Main Street Deli used to be.
There's an option there, and then we also have a new rental business thing maybe for South Seaton Avenue?
140 South Seaton.
140 South Seaton Avenue, which has parking already.
Where's that?
It's a brown house in between Paul's pit stop across from the mayor.
Where the old garage was, where...
Oh, okay, where Ford Garage or something used to be?
A half block up from Pizza Hut, does that help?
There's a rental sign there now, I think.
It's a single-family house.
What is it?
It's a single-family house.
But it's been changed to business.
But there's also a shed behind it as well, but like a, not a shed, like an informal shed, but literally like a parking shed.
Do you know what they're talking about? He's on our board.
Okay.
I'm just letting the town know that we are, if you have any ideas. I didn't know, we had thought, where the deputy sheriff offices, is that whole building being used? Or who owns it? Or is that yours? Or it's all being used?
Yeah.
With the Seaton Center? Have you approached the daughters regarding this? Is that not...
They have, and my concern there is it's way out of town. We have many, many walkers.
It's a block and a half off of...
I know.
From where you are, though. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
The new Seaton Center.
The new Seaton Center, the daughters...
Oh, no, they don't have room for us.
They do not?
When they built that, we were to move in if they were on the other side where they used to be, they were gonna incorporate us, but they had to size down, and they don't have room.
Now, how about here?
The corp, where it used to be.
Downstairs, all the buildings, all the rooms.
It would be up to the county.
Where they kicked us out of this building.
Yeah, that would be up to the county.
Years ago. We were here to start with until they renovated, and they said, "Because..." I understand, because we're funneled under Religious Coalition, it's separation of church and state, I think. I'm not sure. I just know 15 years ago, they kicked us out of here.
My recommendation would be to contact Zach, our town planner, and let him know exactly what you're kind of looking for, what your needs are, and let him work through some options that we may know of, may not know of, but, you know, we're always keeping our eyes and ears out for grants and loans and things of that nature. So he's probably your best contact here at the town to be able to help you out with that.
Okay, and the Pregnancy Center and us, we don't have to stay together, it's just nice to be together, you know, we're both equal, we can, we've discussed this and are willing to go separate ways, but we both need a place, I'll put it that way. Unless we decide to fix the place up that we have, I'm not sure what we're gonna do, but I just wanted to make the town aware of what's going on.
Have you approached the churches?
Yeah, there's no, nothing in the churches. Permanent.
Mr. Golden, a quick question.
Yes.
That's in the historic, well, the designated area, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You might want to tell the building owner that there are grant funds available for him to rehabilitate the property. There is a match, there will be an obligation on his part to put some money in, you know, a skin in the game, as it were, but there are funds available through a grant process, and the town has had profound success on Main Street with this sort of thing. So it would, you know, it might serve your needs very well, but, you know, you might suggest to him he contact town staff and pursue grant funding to help subsidize his effort to restore the structure.
Okay. One of the problems is, I live in Pennsylvania, and the other, Melanie Turner, lives in Pennsylvania too, and even now, she, I think they moved to West Virginia. So I mean, not living here, we don't know much about Maryland.
Yeah, Zach will help you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Free money.
I have a few ideas, so I think we have, we can...
Yeah, we definitely don't want to lose the food bank and...
Absolutely.
That's the garden, the sign. Wayne, you gonna wait for the garden to be presented?
Yes, I believe we're on it.
Okay. Okay. And Max, Max too? Max Ling or, is it Ling?
Let me see.
M-A-X-X?
Mark.
Oh, is it Mark? Oh, my God. You're way worse than, Mark, you're way worse than I do.
You're about to head right at you.
It looks like Max Ling.
So, good evening. My name is Mark Long, M-E-R-K. I live at 800 Fraley Road.
You sure you're not a doctor?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Should've been.
But this isn't why I got up here to speak, but I want to reference some points that Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned. I happen to serve on the executive committee of the Frederick County Affordable Housing Council, and we advocate for affordable housing in the county and also help create policy for affordable housing. Also serve on the Board of Directors of Interfaith Housing Alliance, who create affordable housing and provide services for affordable housing. So I would like to give you any information you would want. I'd be willing to give a presentation to the commissioners if you want. I will be here when Malcolm Fergal makes his Alice presentation, because their highest priority at United Way is to create affordable housing in the county, and the, I mean, kind of interlink with our missions. But anyway, the reason I'm here, this afternoon, I was sat over at the community park with my dog Duncan at the dog park and enjoying the snow, and my dog was enjoying himself romping in the snow, and we were about to leave when Wayne Slaughter showed up and his friend Sandra and their dog Gina. And we, our dogs played for a while, and then I said I wanted to get some exercise because I like to stretch my legs from time to time, so we started walking through the community park, and, which I do almost every other day, I really enjoy the park and enjoy the trail very much so. And I just moved to Emmitsburg three, a little over three years ago, and that was a great asset for me to be so close to the park and particularly the dog park. So we got to walking around and talking, and Sandra starts talking about the botanical garden that she was proposing, or they will propose later in the agenda, and this was the first I had heard of it. So I listened to what they were proposing and what they had in mind, and I thought, "This is a wonderful idea. I would very much like to see this." You know, the park is beautiful, it's a great asset for the town, it's something we should be proud of, but it could use a little color, and I think helping the pollinators is a great thing, helping wildlife is a great thing, and it would all go a great distance to helping, you know, beautify the park even a little bit more than it already is, and would just make it that much more valuable for the town. So I'm all on board with this, I just wanted to come out and speak to this and say, "I hope you give it a favorable vote," or, I don't know if you're voting tonight, but I hope you will look at it favorably, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Administrative business? Introduction for Frederick County Councilman Michael Blue?
He's not here. He's absent.
Nothing on the consent agenda? Treasurer's report?
Yes, sir. The treasurer's report follows as such. As of February 1st, 2019, the cash balance was $5,551,522. Deposits were $283,812. There were withdrawals of $187,228, which leaves us with an operating balance forward of $5,648,106. These are the top 10 checks, and as staff is here, I would happily redirect any questions to staff.
Before you ask, Commissioner Ritz, field number two is down. The transformer failed. We would not have any production in the month of December, January, and February.
The solar field?
Yes.
I wasn't even gonna ask this time.
I was gonna ask for a report on the, how much we had saved, but we didn't produce any of that field.
Not on, yeah, no. Not on the solar field too.
Is it gonna be up and running now?
Supposed to be up and running by mid-March. So in the next couple of weeks.
Do we have to pay them for that, or what happens with that?
No, they fix it.
No, they fix it. They're responsible for all the repairs and maintenance. There's no cost to us because there's no production.
So how do they do with the cost of the solar? I mean, how do they charge?
They don't charge us for field two.
Okay.
With their no production, there's no invoice or anything to be paid.
Thank you.
That concludes the treasurer's report.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Planning Commission report, there is none. Now we're going to the agenda items. Adoption of an amendment to create a cross-connection control program for discussion and consideration.
As I mentioned previously under the manager's report, this is a state mandate as a result of the Maryland Department of Environment's inspection that they did at the water, at the water treatment plant, I believe, in January. I have Mr. Thistle here, as you know, is the superintendent of water and sewer, and Zach, who will go over this agenda item and answer any questions you might have. So I'll turn it over to both of you.
Okay, so we're going to start by going through briefly of the proposed ordinance so the members of the public kind of understand what this is all about. So under purpose, basically, the purpose is to protect the public potable water supply served by the town from possible contaminations, which could backflow or back siphon into the public water system. Under the authority, the authority was, like Kathy said, was brought down from M D E, but it was originally started from the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974. Responsibility, ultimately, we are responsible for the protection of our water distribution system from contaminants or pollution due to backflow or back siphoning of contaminants. For definitions, I won't go through any of that unless someone has a question on one of the definitions. It's multiple pages. For administration, the water department will operate the cross-connection control program to include keeping of records, which fulfills the requirements of the M D E cross-connection regulations, and the planning department will help administer.
Where are you?
I'm sorry, we're on page 20.
Why is this all in bold capital letters? It's very hard to read.
So anytime, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Willetts, anytime that we are proposing a change to the code, anything that's bolded and capitalized is new text being entered into our code.
But there's no old text.
It's all new.
It's all new ordinance.
Just as the sign code, it's all new, so that's why it was bolded.
It is hard to read.
Okay.
Something that could be corrected in the code at a future date, but there's got to be a way to delineate. As you know, most of your ordinance come through with new and old, and so that way you can see what's new and what's old. And just unfortunately, when it's brand new, it's all like this.
Or a different font?
Yes.
Like Tohoma?
I second that. Anyway, go ahead, Zach.
Okay. The owner shall allow their property to be inspected for possible cross-connections and shall follow the provisions of the town's program and M D E's regulations. The owner shall be responsible for water quality beyond the outlet end of the contaminant device and should utilize fixture outlet protection for that purpose. Town staff will assist them in the survey of his or her facilities and assist them in the selection of proper fixture outlet devices and the proper installation of these devices. So for requirements, the town will provide onsite evaluation or inspection of the plans in order to determine the type of backflow preventer, if any, that would be required. The town will perform, will also inform them of any corrections that need, or they're deemed necessary. The town will not allow any cross-connections to remain unless it is protected. The town shall inform the owner by letter of any failure to comply. By the time of the first reinspection, the town will allow an additional 15 days for the correction. In the event the owner fails to comply with the necessary corrections by the time of the second reinspection, the town will inform the owner by letter that the water service to the owner's premises will be terminated within a period not to exceed five days. The, let's see, the town may charge a fee if the owner's water service is disconnected. In the event that the owner informs the town of extenuating circumstances as to why the correction has not been made, the time extension may be granted for up to 30 days. If the town determines at any time that a serious threat to the public health exists, the water service will be terminated immediately. So for the owner's responsibilities, the owner shall be responsible for elimination and protection of all contaminants on their property. The owner, after having been informed by letter from the town, shall, at their expense, install, maintain, and test or have tested any backflow preventers on their premises. On new connections, the owner shall submit a town cross-connection permit application with associated fee and an approved backflow device test report from a certified backflow device tester. One of the easiest is to use is the county. They do test these, and it's pretty reasonable. The owner shall submit to the town every two years a permit application with associated fee and an approved backflow device test report. The owner shall correct any malfunctions of the backflow preventer, and the owner shall inform the town of any proposed or modified cross-connections. In this ordinance, you'll see in figure 33 and 37, the owner shall install the backflow preventers in a manner approved by the town, which is basically, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm really confused. How many, are these people's homes, and there's a problem with them? Can you break this down a little bit more? I don't understand, so I'm not processing anything you're saying.
Yep, I'm almost there. Can I just go a little bit more?
I guess.
Okay. Degree of hazard. All threats will be classified by a degree of hazard and will require the installation of approved reduced pressure principle backflow preventer devices or double check valves. So for permits, they're required for each backflow preventer. A fee will be charged for the initial permit and a separate fee for the renewal of each permit. And like I said, permits will renew every two years and are non-transferable. Existing in-use backflow prevention devices, any existing backflow preventers shall be allowed by the town to continue in service unless a degree of hazard is such as to supersede the effectiveness of the present backflow preventer or result in an unreasonable risk to the public health. And basically, the next is periodic testing. What I said, it's every two years. Records and reports, we are required by M D E to keep record of every single prevention device. If M D E would come back and ask for a report and we don't have it, we would be the ones getting in trouble. And now to your question for residential dual checks. So all new residential buildings will be required to install a residential dual-check device immediately downstream of the water meter at the owner's expense. Mr. Thistle and staff discussed if there's any major work determined by the water department to be done on a home, he will require a new device be added.
Do we know how much these devices cost, or approximately how much they cost, just?
Yes, they're approximately $60.
$60, okay. So we're talking commercial and residential, new construction. When a change occurs to a commercial or residential property, it will be retrofitted? When you say downstream, does that mean in the house, past the water meter? Okay.
I'm going to ask Mr. Thistle to come up and answer all these questions about the actual installation and questions about the backflow preventers themselves. He's more familiar with them.
Sure, sounds reasonable.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners?
So I'm just trying to verify I understand the big picture. So downstream means within the homeowner's property, like within their structure?
Immediately after the meter.
After the meter, there it is, okay. Does the valve purge right there? Like if there's a backflow event?
Mostly in homes, you're going to put in a little, it's not like that, it's a dual-check.
Okay.
It will not dump. It won't do anything except rerun it from going.
Okay, so the water in the building is static?
Unidirectional valve.
Okay, and the permitting process is required by the state? Is that, like, there has to be an inspection and a permit every two years? Staff?
Yes, they are required by M D E to get a permit.
Residential.
Not for residential, no.
The state, just for business.
Just for businesses.
And for commercial purposes, is it town staff who inspects it, or do they hire that outside approved contractor?
They would hire an outside approved contractor. Dan and the water department would be available for any questions.
Do you feel it's in our best interest to do it or to have a vendor?
That would be a certified plumber, that's certified in backflow testing. They have to test it periodically and ensure that it's working properly. Now, most of the commercial ones, like you say, would dump, okay? If they would lose pressure, say, in the main outside the building, this would open up and not allow any
Back siphoning.
any backflow, any siphoning back into the system. It'll, it'll basically provide a gap in the system, so the water cannot go back into the system.
And do we have an estimate as to what a plumber's fee might be for that visit to certify the backflow item? The valve, sorry? Is that like an hour's work?
Right now, the town has 10 of them, and they're like $100 apiece yearly.
You're not, are the old residents grandfathered in?
They are pretty much grandfathered in unless there's significant work that needs to be done on their interior.
Some have meters and some have curb stops. So there's a difference.
Every water service has a water meter.
Well, my house has a curb stop, but it has a meter on the house, so a little black box on the house, which tells you how much water goes through it, but my actual water connection is a curb stop, which, you know, turns the water on and off.
Yes, but we're, you're talking about right after the meter, so your meter is inside your basement?
Right, right, way inside the basement.
So if you would ever do major plumbing work, we'd require you to put a backflow preventer in. A lot of the houses now, they have the swing check valves. That will help at some degree, but they're not, they get old, they leak past.
Right, and they do stick sometimes, or stick open or stick shut.
Correct, yes. They'll stick shut, and you won't have any water pressure.
No. Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
So all businesses are required to do this, but residents are not required unless they do some major construction or they're new, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we pass this, do they have 15 days, the businesses, to get this done?
It's not all businesses either.
Dan can explain that.
If you have a cross-contamination consideration, probability, like, let's just take, for instance, the car wash. The way they fill their soap containers and everything for the sprays, they have an air gap, okay? That's nothing more than a piece of pipe that's higher than the tank that it can never get back up in that pipe. That's, that's an authorized backflow preventer.
That's like a vent.
That's a physical backflow prevention. That doesn't have to be inspected but one time. And as long as you don't raise the tank level up into the pipe, you're good, you know? It doesn't have to be inspected unless you change the plumbing. Now, say, large boilers and stuff that could pressurize and backfeed into the system, yes, they need to be inspected yearly. That's not only the state, that's county, and now we need to approve our ordinance also to get up, to keep up with everybody else.
Basically, it's our job to keep record of everything, so if there's any ever questions, we have record.
So you'll contact the businesses that are required to do this, and they'll have a reasonable amount of time, not 15 days?
They'll have 90 days in the beginning to have their devices checked and their permits filled out.
That's for the new businesses, right?
That's for existing also. We have a list of, it's about two pages, but the majority of it, which I did speak with Daughters of Charity, and they said I could speak about this. They are in favor of this, actually. They said it's a highly dangerous situation for some of their equipment, so they're 100% in support of this, but they are the majority of the case. And they are aware of the permit requirements, and they think it's great.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah.
Is it okay to ask?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Mr. Golden, a question, and when I previewed this, I didn't see it, so I may have missed this, but bear with me. I'm aware that Baltimore County, when a private home changes hands through sale, there's an inspection of the chimney, and if the flu doesn't pass inspection, the private residence is required to re-line the chimney flue. Now, is there something in here that when a property transfers from one owner to another, a residence, that it's required to add the backflow device, backflow preventer valve?
No, sir.
Is that something we might want to consider? Would there be value to that so we get ourselves up to speed sooner?
M D E does not require that, but I would defer to Dan.
That's not a bad idea, for sure.
I'm just worried about the expense it might, you know, the individual might incur, the seller or the buyer, however that might be negotiated. But if it's something that protects the system and protects the broader community, I think there's a higher purpose that might be served by that, and, you know, I'd ask the board maybe to consider that.
Can I?
Commissioner Ritz?
Thank you. We were talking about grandfathering. I was a little confused on that. So residential properties aren't, are grandfathered in unless there are, what was the rest of your?
So unless there's significant water work that needs Dan's attention, like an infrastructure permit.
Okay.
If it's major, Dan will go to the house and/or his staff and determine whether or not it's required.
And you're only going to know that if the homeowner is actually doing something?
Correct. I mean, we're not going to pull each individual house
No.
and go in and do an inspection on their basement. But if you would have a water meter upgrade, possibly have a plumbing, say, a lot of people don't have valves inside their house. So if, say, in the middle of the winter, their line would freeze in the basement or something, or a line would break, they would, the water would keep pouring into their basement until we get there to shut the valve off, the curb stop. Now, a lot of times when we have plumber, that we know a plumber is in there, we'll have them put valves on each side of the meter so the homeowner can go down there and boom, water shut off. That's a prime time to put a backflow preventer. I'm talking minor work like that. I mean, it would take a plumber 10 minutes to put one of those in.
Yeah, he's correct, because I believe I have one, I might have one on my house already, because when they did the main plumbing out there already. My pipes did freeze and bust in January. I lost my whole dining room this year, and it's a good thing they put a turn-off valve inside. I didn't have to. This happened in the Saturday evening, you guys, when I got, I would have lost more than just my dining.